Okay, quarter fire.
Set value of the agenda.
Can't choose ready to start with.
Glad to listen to this flag of the United States of America. To give it a quarter for which it stands, my nation under God, invisible with the great and judges across.
We did not publish an agenda, but it's pretty simple. We're gonna have a couple presentations by the finance director and the town manager. And we're gonna open it up to public comment, which includes questions. And then we're gonna deliberate and make a decision. So Karen, would you like to go first?
Sure.
Let's see if I can get it there.
Start out with, I reviewed the revenues for the town with DRA twice before we started getting close to setting the tax rate. This is something that's always done just before setting the tax rate. And making sure that we have as close of numbers as we can to what we believe year end is gonna look like. So, the estimated revenues for the town are $5,381,516. You'll see that on each one of your spreadsheets I've given you. The three spreadsheets you've got are different scenarios. The two things that the selectmen can discuss and look at possibly changing is the overlay or the use of fund balance. The overlay is money that's used for abatement of taxes. It's for properties that the town has taken and things that we need to do to clean them up or prepare them for selling. So we use these funds and they're used throughout the year toward doing those different types of things. They're also for legal costs to do with abatements. So at this time, we have around $73,000 in expenditures already for the year for overlay. We know there's roughly about $40,000 left. Andrew and I have discussed between 116,000 to 125,000. Whatever is not used by the end of the year will fall to fund balance, whatever's left of that. The use of fund balance to set the tax rate is, the fund balance is what the auditors have come up with and I have to agree with once I get all their numbers in, of what the town has for monies that haven't been set aside for expenditures or liabilities. We came up with 111, excuse me, $511,789. Voted last year at town meeting was the use of 210 of those funds. So that leaves an adjusted fund, undesignated fund balance of $511,579. In the first scenario that I presented, that's actually not the first one. The first one has no use of fund balance, using no fund balance. In this first scenario, the town, town's rate is less than last year's. The calculation is $8.51. Last year, we had $8.57. So there's a savings of six cents on the town's rate. And that's if we use 125,000, which I feel very comfortable between that 116 and 125 to use as overlay. The schools rate is down from last year. The schools rate calculation is 13.29 cents per thousand. Last year it was 13.32. It's a difference of two cents less than last year's. The state rate, we have school state rate of $2.39. Last year it was $2.50. That's a difference of 11 cents per thousand. County rate, the county rate has gone up. Last year, the county portion of the taxes was $1,103,40. This year, it's $1,172,804. The county rate this year is factored in as $1.63. Last year it was $1.52. The difference is an increase of 11 cents. So the town and the school rate and the state school rate has gone down. The county portion has gone up. By using no fund balance, the estimate is the tax rate for this year, if you choose to go with no fund balance, use of no fund balance and the overlay, is $25.81 per thousand. Last year it was 25.91. There is usually a few pennies difference because of percentages that are used. And DRA will adjust these numbers, even though you might approve a certain item, DRA reviews it and may adjust it a little bit to make up for that few pennies here and there. There's a second scenario I put in here, using 100,000 of the fund balance and keeping the overlay at 125,000. This savings on the town rate would be 20 cents over last year's. It would make a difference in the tax rate of 24 cents less. The school difference would stay the same, the state difference would stay the same, and the counties the same as what we factored in for 2017. So the savings to the taxpayer would be 24 cents per thousand. Then I have one more other scenario, trying to get it to 25 cents per thousand. And that's using, having the selectmen decide to use 110,000 of the use of fund balance. That is saving on the town side, 21 cents per thousand. The overall savings is 25 cents for the taxpayer per thousand. That would leave a fund balance of $401,579. Last year, the town's fund balance was 314,139. It is a lot smaller than what the recommended retainage is. The recommended retainage for the town is actually 5%, but it's only recommended. There's many towns that are less than 5%.
5% is 1.1 million dollars.
Yes, 5% is $1,154,924. It would be quite an accomplishment if we could ever get there.
Even with the 110,000 of unreserved fund balance being applied, we're still increasing our unreserved fund balance, getting closer to that, we're getting closer to the 1.5%.
We're still increasing it if we pick scenario number three.
That's correct.
We're increasing it more if we pick number two or number one.
That's correct.
Let me also say, we are here today with this size group and the people that were invited because of last year's scenario when we had such a surprise and such an increase. It was said that there was secret dealings and so on and so forth, so big public session with budget committee invited, the school folks are here in case there are questions or comments directed at them. It's an effort on our part to be more transparent and our part includes the town administration and the select board. Do you have anything else to add, Karen?
I would really like to thank the school board and Tom Mangles and whoever else was involved in not retaining any funds this year to try to bring the tax rate down. I really appreciate that effort. I know you could have retained about 250,000 very easily. I do appreciate that. It does help in the end when we're calculating tax rates.
Also appreciate it by the select board for the public's information. We have met, I believe, three times this year with the school people in an effort to work through these problems together and be more transparent. The last of which was, I believe televised, or at least it was filmed, I don't know if we got televised, but, and that was open to the public, we hadn't noticed that. I think you had some more comments, don't you, Andrew?
Yeah, really just was gonna briefly talk about like the breakdown of the tax rate and then also some impacts on the tax rate. One of the things, I didn't have time to put it into the PowerPoint, but I could just show you a quick chart that shows some of the MS1 comparisons. If we take a look at this right here, we can see some of the impacts on the tax rate. This shows the change, overall change in valuation in the town. For example, general land values have decreased. It's hard to see up there, but this is residential, our residential values have been increasing over last year. Mainly extracted housing has actually had a slight decrease in value. And commercial and industrial has done really well this year and it's made up a good portion of the amount of value that we've lost in utilities. And it's kind of complicated to get into, but the utilities loss is actually in part due to what's called the ratio, the sales ratio. And so the sales ratio is determined based on sales of property and how they've deviated from what the values are set at from our last revale. And so if we take across the board what properties has done, the property, the market's actually doing better. And so sales are higher than our value as of setup back in the 2015 valuation. And that percentage grows, and the more it grows, the more we have to apply that percentage to other values like the utilities. And when we apply it, I think we're at like 93.3% and we're under 93.6%. Then that's applied to the value of utilities too, and it makes them be taxed at a lower value. So that's that major difference. And then also just to show you a little bit of the breakdown, if the board was to go with, say, scenario three, if this is gonna work. Let's see. Oh, there we go. Scenario three, we can see, this is just another chart to show you the total valuation of the community based on a percentage of the different sectors of the community. So you can see utilities makes up about 32% of our value, residential 34%, so they're pretty close. So any fluctuation in utilities has a major impact just because it's not, it's just a few parcels versus the others. Also the tax rate change, just to kind of show you, Karen's already gone over, if the board was to go with, based on scenario three, at 25% reduction in where that's at. You can see the town, school, and state are all in decline. The county has had an increase. And then this is just a breakdown of where the tax rate sits. So schools 52% of tax rate, town 33%, county 6%, state 9% of the total tax rate. Just a little bit of different way of taking a look at it, some of the things that go into it.
Okay. If you're done, Karen's done, I will open it up to...
Again, can I ask a question to Karen before we go any further? I don't know what order we go in here.
Go right ahead.
I'm looking at these and it looks like, unless my math is wrong, it looks like we're a penny high and a penny low on each one of these, roundoff issues?
Those are roundoff issues.
Okay.
Yep. That's what she meant by the state of finalizing things. A lot of these things are many decimals beyond the hundreds.
So all these numbers aren't necessarily going to add up?
Correct. They'll be within a penny usually.
Yep, okay.
Can I make one more?
Well, I'm sorry, within a penny when they're done?
No.
Within a penny right now?
Right now.
Gotcha, okay.
One more comment, the savings that the school actually saved the taxpayers by using their fund balance was over 30 cents. So they actually saved the taxpayer 30 cents by using their fund balance up and not holding any. So it's 14 cents per 100,000 of valuation. And they used 200, right around 250,000.
Also reduced appropriation to the debt.
You did.
Okay. We will now open it up to public comment and/or questions. Ron Bolt.
Okay, I recall a few years back, the town established a policy of fund balance. I believe that was, the goal was to keep at least 5%?
There was, yes, yes.
So I just wanted to kind of throw that marker out for starters.
We've not followed that policy over the years.
Have we ever been at 5%?
Pardon me?
Have we ever been at 5%?
The only time we were ever at 5% is when we were saving aside money for the TransCanada abatement.
One of the issues here, which we've discussed over the years, is that this is the people's money and providing part of that to go back to reduce the tax rate is where we always have gotten into this discussion. Ron's right, you know, there was a policy, there was also a state recommendation for all towns, not just Littleton, to hold back the 5%. It's a seriously debated comment or question out in the community. Mr. Chairman, I have a question, but I'd like to hold off until we hear from anybody else.
Well, now that we've opened up this window, I think I heard that if we chose scenario number three, we would have a fund balance of 400,000 plus?
Yes.
What would those numbers be for scenario two and scenario one?
Scenario two is using 100,000 of fund balance. You would have 411,579, which is 1.78%. If you use no fund balance, you would have 511,579, it's 2.21%.
And number three was 400,000 and what?
Number three was 401,579, it's 1.74%.
Okay.
Can you tell me again what the fund balance was last year?
The last year fund balance for the town was 314,139, it was 1.41%. The school had retained last year 270,174.
Okay. Now, having those ready for other questions or additional questions or comments or recommendations. Mr. Bolt?
Well, I would recommend that you keep the most fund balance as possible, which got spotted up. I know it's the people's money, so therefore it's my money, so kind of calculated against my own interests here, but having sat on that side of the table, you know, I realize that the fund balance is the most powerful financial tool that you have in your possession. It can be used for emergencies, it can be used to fund warrant articles, and it's available for rainy day needs. Much as I'd like to have another penny or two off the tax rate, personally, I would recommend keeping the fund balance as high as you can.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will now close the public input session. We will deliberate in public and we will make a decision.
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Karen, in your email to us where these were attached, you said our fund balance this year is just over 511,000. If we use 110,000 to reduce taxes, it will be reduced by that 110, but will be higher than last year. The use of the fund balance in this amount would reduce the property tax rate enough so that taxpayers would be paying about 25% less. That's including all four of the components.
25 cents.
25 cents less.
25, 25 cents less, I'm sorry, sorry. Per thousand. A little further down, you said you're recommending the 110,000. You can change the amount we are recommending. I would be very concerned if it was changed. So if I made a proposal to add another 40,000 from 110 to 150,000, which would bring it up to 25 cents for the town alone, 29 cents for all four entities that make up the tax rate. Tell me what that 40,000 means to you. And I guess, Andrew, I'd ask you the same question. So if we took another 40,000, which is contrary to what Ron's suggesting, and added it back to reduce the taxes, what does that 40,000 mean to you?
Well, you're reducing the amount that's in fund balance, so we're not growing anymore. And remember, this year, we won't, the school won't have a reserve because they all put all their money back in. So when it comes time to pay out larger payments as we get closer to halfway through the year and closer to when the taxes are set, the tax rate's set, we may need a TAM. We've been very fortunate this year and this next accounts payable run will be exhausting the monies that we've set aside so far. So even though it's a small amount, it's still a cushion. And where the school doesn't have the cushion, the more cushion that we have, I feel better about it. And I was trying to at least give something back to the taxpayers or recommend to the selectmen to and come up with a reasonable number. That 40,000 makes a small difference. We have 100,000 makes a 14 cent difference.
Yeah, I think the recommendation made was fine. I was just wondering if that 40,000 really was tied to something you were anticipating. How many contracts are we gonna be negotiating this coming year?
In 2018, we will be negotiating two contracts.
Two of the three.
We don't have...
Two of the two, yeah, that's right. You have three. Okay, thank you.
I thought I'd close public comment, but Rudy, if you have something to say, we'd be happy to hear from you.
Yes, I just want to ask a question. I've been doing some research, you know, on property taxes, property taxation. It's a very long process, you know. Right now, I'm kind of, 1.3 million dollars in less tax that we're supposed to get from big entities. It's like Home Depot, it's like Walmart, War Green, the Tanyi, or it's all matter, you know. I mean, I've kind of finished yet, which I'll let you know when I finish. I don't want to give you a copy or anything. What I would like to know, probably the taxpayers they would like to know, if this disparaging between five years ago and the last year, when we have the appraisal, the new appraisal, if the appraisal was done in a quote-unquote "proper" way, that so properly they don't save about 500, you know, a few million dollars, 300,000, and so, and so, and so. Do you believe that had taxation, it would have been less, that's for job, Carol, people, they pay you, you know, for all the work that you do. But, you know, what I'd like to know, if all these entities, they would have paid the right amount money, okay, without saving, like I said, 300,000, 400,000, 600,000, and the company would have received the complete amount of money. Do you think the taxpayers they would have saved some money on taxation, or it would have, you know, it would have been the same? I mean, you know, because the disparaging, they're doing the old taxes and the new one five years ago, this year, and last year, it's kind of, you know, it's kind of, you know, if people look at the numbers, I understand what the town manager is saying about the property taxes, maybe the property value in place were up and down, I know that. By the time, we're talking about a million dollars, more than a million dollars. What I got to, you know, I don't want to give you a copy when I finish. But what I'd like to know from you gentlemen, if the, if the taxes were to go down, if everybody would have paid, you know, the amount that they're supposed to pay for property taxes? If you can give me explanation, I'd like...
I think your question was, if the property assessments were higher last year, would the tax rate have gone down? The answer is yes. However, the reassessments would have was, it was meant to be, and I have no reason to believe it wasn't fair and equitable. And that's an argument that you and I will have forever. It also is what it is. And they did not go down, they went up in large part because of the revale. That frankly is history. We're dealing with this year, where we're dealing with that revale and all the other issues that changed the numbers this year. And we're going to have a decrease in the tax rate. And in a few minutes, we'll know how much of a decrease, a very little decrease or a slightly larger decrease. But in an effort to answer your question, had the revale been higher, yes, the taxes would have been lower. We're into deliberation. And I don't know where to start. I can start by telling you my feelings. It's one of three. Although it isn't always the case, in this particular case, I agree with Mr. Bolt. I'm in favor of scenario number one. And I'm in favor of scenario number one for the reasons that Mr. Bolt gave. I think he summed up my thinking.
I was going the same way, quite frankly. I mean, I don't want to minimize the, I mean, even if we go with scenario three, we're talking about, I don't know, 50 to 75 bucks a year for, you know, in taxes. I don't want to minimize that, but on a particular property or an average property, I just don't... I think the goal of increasing that, that fund balance is more important right now. And I would agree, I would go, I would not take any of that fund balance out, I would like to see that raise.
For the six years I've been on the board, I've always argued in the other direction. So I think the 110,000 recommended amount would be what I would be satisfied with, for the reasons stated.
Well, we've all expressed our opinions. We can hash them out more if anyone feels it's necessary, or we can vote.
Is everybody just supposed to agree with me?
Yeah, you're the biggest.
Is that the rules?
You're the youngest and the biggest.
If anyone wants to, I don't need, feel I need to defend my argument beyond what I think and what I've said and what Mr. Bolt said. If Franco or Mel want to expound some more, now's the time to do it.
Well, Ron has stated it very well for the past five years. But we have never experienced a situation where, where I turned out to be needed or necessary.
Yeah, except that, except that one of the comments that Karen made that rang to me or resonated with me was, the school's used up all of theirs. Part of the reason this is going down is because the school has used up a lot, all of theirs. And here we are, you know, I think it's an opportunity for us to increase that so that we can do it next year, should the roles be reversed.
What's fascinating about the 5% recommendation is that the state area here, it points to anything that demonstrates that. Now, if you have an enormous flood in the town, and some towns have experienced some pretty serious situations, in fact, towns surrounding us have experienced some situations in the last week or so. But we didn't. And I'm not looking to put more than the 110,000 in this, and I'm kind of acknowledging your professional recommendation that we can do it and you would sleep at night. If you raise it to 150, you won't sleep at night, and you'll call me and complain.
Definitely, we won't sleep.
So I'm trusting your numbers, and I also feel as if where we can, we should reduce the tax rate a little bit.
Okay, thank you, Mel. Anything else, Franco?
Yeah, I just don't want, I, the only thing I want to make sure, clarify at least, I'm not suggesting that we should be striving for that 5%. I don't, I think it would be ridiculous for the town of Willington to have 1.1 million dollars in that. But I think we do need more than what we have now, so.
Yeah. I think if we get to 511,000, it's roughly half of that, so we've got a ways to go to get to the 5%. And I agree, I'm not sure we need to get there, but hearing no new arguments, I will entertain a motion, if someone would like to make it, for scenario one, two, or three, or frankly, something in between, is certainly not off the table.
I'll make a motion that we go with scenario one and that we do not use any of the fund balance at this time.
I know that Mel won't give me a second, so I'll make the second. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried for scenario number one.
He's not going to get to say no?
Yes, he is. Excuse me, Mel. You get to say no.
I say no.
Thank you. So the motion is carried two to one. We are doing scenario number one, which is not using any of our fund balance. The town portion will decrease by 9 cents per thousand.
6 cents.
6 cents. 9 cents.
9 cents total, 6 cents for the town, excuse me. Begging no further business, we adjourn.
Thank you.
So what's the total tax rate, since radio never gets a copy of this name?
Well, the DRA has to officially set it, but based on our estimates, we're looking at 25.81.
25.81.
That's a shame, not the DRA.
Well, that takes a couple weeks.
Yeah.
It takes a quick...
Whatever the next thing is.